All right, well, we are all three here. So let's go on to our ten o'clock and looks like it's Tammy with Sheriff's Office.
Morning Commissioners, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Thank you for hearing our request this morning. As you can see in our packet, we're asking for a remodel to our business office. The new workspace would alleviate some cramped workspace issues that we're having. Create some more continuity and more conform to our current business practices that have changed over the last few years. You know, we're having like everyone else, these continued staff vacancies and this would just allow us to be more effective in in doing our business practices and with our backup roles and training and other things instead of this current divided office space that we have. So if we have everyone in a more centralized location, that we think that this would be more helpful to our current situation and future as well.
Okay, any questions or concerns?
Has there been any discussion with facilities about this?
Yes, there has. We've talked to Kelly about a couple of different ideas and we've talked through those and we believe that the one that we are proposing to you today is the one that is the best suitable for what we need.
Yeah, good. Thank you. I appreciate that. It's good to hear. You know, I guess my concern is you were embarking on completing the next phase of building ten, we're embarking on starting the North Precinct project with going through that process with North Mason Fire. Just I know that there's a lot of pressure that comes from these projects onto our REIT balance, which is I think where this is being asked to be funded from. And so in terms of priorities, I probably prioritize those over this. And just, you know, it's probably not a no-no for me, but it's a, I don't know that we have the capacity to do this and those other projects financially or even from a workforce perspective.
Now, as for myself, I'd like to look at things as in a holistic way and bring all those projects to bear, see what the numbers look like, what our funds look like, and then make those decisions. We don't usually do it on the fly like this anyway. So if we can, let's pull together and have a briefing on where we're sitting for REIT and our projects, including this project in that discussion.
Right, so I think building ten, the estimates for that went a lot higher than we predicted. And correct me on that.
Commissioner Trask, you're correct that they're more than double what we expected. And we've got an elevator over in our Superior Court Building that is most likely going to cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars just to get it operational again, all of that coming out of real estate exercise tanks.
Right, so maybe what we should do is get a list of what we have and then we can prioritize them. And we could add this to that list too, but I think it's important that we figure out which ones are the highest priority for the county. So, you know, at this point in time.
Kelly, were there any other options that were less expensive?
Um, Kelly did propose one option that would have been, you know, less cost. Looking and talking with the sheriff and talking about the future of what, you know, what our building can be and where it's going. You know, we came to the resolution that this particular proposal is the one that will suit best for that.
And I appreciate that, but if it comes down to this or nothing, is there another option? Willing to consider that may be less expensive that we may put into place immediately, I guess is my question. And that's why I asked that of Kelly. This price tag with all the projects that we're looking at, I try to keep track of my numbers. It's there's only so many dollars that are available and we need to keep some of it in there for other future projects as well, so.
Hey Commissioners, could I jump in for a second?
Sure.
Yeah, so one option that we could look at if you are willing to entertain it is we have over the past number of years turned back a fairly sizable amount of money that's left over from our wages and benefits towards the end of the year. And if the commission would be willing to look at using some of those funds this year to help with those remodel, we would certainly entertain going that option rather than the REIT route. Obviously, that would have to wait until later in the year so that we have a little better picture of where we're at, but I think that would be another way to get that done.
You know, those monies have no color to those dollars and can be used anywhere where REIT is used for construction. I personally, I don't want to start, we moved away from obligating unexpended budget authority some years ago, and that's what one of the things that saved us. I'd hate to start allocating out unexpended budget authority now after we've finally done such a great job. It's not a bad idea. I'm just telling you that's where I'm at on that, so you know right up front.
No, and I appreciate that as a general practice, but I think for specific, specific items that we all agree is in the best interest of the county moving forward, it would still be an option that we could entertain.
Yeah, I think we still need to just figure out our, the priority list for the county and then go for there. So this is something that I think that we can bring back for further discussion after we prioritize our lists, I think. At least that's where I'm sitting.
Okay, thank you. Did you have any other questions?
Well, thank you guys for everything that you're doing. I know that you guys are doing a really good job with the restrictions passed down from the state and with the resources that you have. So truly appreciate you guys.
All right, thank you Commissioners.
Thank you.
And Commissioner, we have Kevin Hanson on here as well. He wasn't on the, on the docket until the very end of Wednesday, so. I didn't know if he was on your pile or not.
I think he is.
I'm looking at it, his proposal now.
Yep, prisoner housing contract, right?
Yes.
All right, let's go for it. Present away.
All right, I think I'm muted. Morning.
Good morning.
So in front of you is a proposal to reinvigorate the Lewis County Prisoner Housing Contract we had oh, probably seven years ago. I think we've talked to each of you about at some point about having an Nisswali contract. And that has not happened and for whatever reason, and I don't know. I don't know what is the problem with this quality, but it seems like they just don't want to participate with us. So I've been trying for months to piggyback on the city's contract that they just signed with Nisswali. And I'm getting crickets and apparently it's hung up in there with their legal people or something. What, and so this isn't a bad thing. This is, this contract is just it's a different, it's a different style than what we've talked to you about the Nisswali contract. Because I think when we talked about having an alternate contract with Nisswali, we talked about, you know, the jail being full with the amount of staff we have right now at sixty. And then we were anticipating, you know, having the need to spend X amount of dollars every year or at least this year for alternative housing. And that's just not happening. We've taken the booking restrictions off the jail and our day of population was as low as thirty-six last week. So, and I know the Sheriff's Office has been arresting people. We've been taking pretty much anybody. And we're just not filling the jail up. So this, this proposal, proposed contract is more of a, and I, it's in the briefing notes there, it's more of kind of an emergency emergency option for us. So if I have some keep separates, some inmates that get arrested, that I've got to completely keep separate, I'll give you a place to put them. It could be for some kind of an emergency. If we have an earthquake or something where I've got to, I've got to house people somewhere. We're not asking for specific funding from you guys. We're just asking for the authority to implement the contract to have it there if we need it. And so far, we don't anticipate asking you for any funding to fund this. If we do use it, at least, at least short term, we will support that, that funding through our allocated budget. So so that's where we're at. I think I outlined it pretty good in the briefing, briefing notes there, so. What do you guys think?
Well Chief, because you put it, the way you just put it, I would definitely be, as long as it's not an extra budget authority, you have it within your budget. I know you do because of staffing and also because of what we've given allocations for for food and everything else for a different number. I think this is a no-brainer and I actually appreciate you going out and making this happen. So we have this available. And it could actually be, I can see how this could be used within our budget to handle some of the problems you may have in your jail. If you can get them singularly housed, what a winner for everybody. So I'm fully supportive. I'm glad you did it. Thank you for pulling that together.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Commissioner Shu.
Yeah, absolutely supportive of this, was supportive of it when you brought it up a couple of years ago and then, you know, COVID kind of locked everybody down from being able to utilize additional resource or facilities and that kind of thing. And yeah, I think this is a really, a really good option for us. Like you said, in the case of an emergency or if you need to, you need to move your population around. So absolutely supportive. Thank you.
Yep.
And I'm I, you've got three.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks a lot.
Thanks Chief. All right Travis, anything else for us?
No ma'am, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
All right, thank you. All right, let's move on to public health. Do we have Dave on here or Melissa? Yep, there's Dave.
You've got both of us and welcome to Public Health Week. You'll be seeing some stuff coming out from us for each day this week as we go through National Public Health Week. We're gonna start off with Melissa who just disappeared. We only have one item on the agenda. Melissa, are you ready?
Morning Commissioners. Good morning. So today, the Department of Commerce, they have additional shelter program grant funding. The purpose of the shelter program grant is to develop or expand shelter programs. So Community Lifeline is a recipient of the Shelter Program Grant from Mason County. They've submitted a proposal in a budget for the use of these additional funds. It will really ultimately allow them to complete a few capital projects to improve their facility and by extension be able to hopefully increase their shelter bed capacity. So we are just looking for approval from the board to move that amendment forward for the additional dollars from Commerce.
Melissa, are they the only game in town?
They're the only agency that has a shelter program grant now, so they would be the only agency that could affect, accept the additional funds through an amendment. I don't think we could do a new contract with another agency.
With that, then I'm supportive. But we do need to look at other options, creating other options. At some point, we can't just keep doing the same thing over and over again. But no, I'm supportive, Commissioner.
I'm supportive of the amendment as well.
Yeah, I'm supportive also. What, so you mentioned their bed capacity. Where are they at right now?
They're at thirty-five beds. Originally, we would have liked to see, I think they've been able to do up to about fifty-four beds in the past, but they've really kind of been limited by the conditional use permit from the City of Shelton. So in their last hearing, they were advised, you know, make some improvements to the outside of the building in terms of their lighting, their security, things like that. So that's what they've gone out to bid for, for the work. And so that's what some of these dollars will pay for, so that they can be able to reapply for the cup hearing and increase their beds to the fifty.
Beds. Okay, and, and, and I think I support this, but I just want to make sure that it's not exceeding what the city has permitted them for. Make sure that, you know, they're, they're compliant in everything.
Basically, what I have to do is complete this contract and then go back to the city hearing examiner and reapply for those extra bed spaces.
Now, we already increased our monies we've given them to bring it up to that bed space though, correct?
Yes.
So this is in, on top of that.
Yeah, to try to try to jump over some of those hurdles that were placed there.
Okay, I just want, you know, to make sure that, that they're being that they're following what they're supposed to do and that they're, they're meeting their expectations.
Important point, Commissioner Trask.
And so I guess you got three that supported. I do have a question about them. Was that issue? Did you check up, follow up on that?
I did. There are none. There was a misunderstanding.
Really?
Apparently, yes. I called immediately after you, you called me on Friday and was told that it was not that and it was something else from the prior week, but it was cleared up.
Okay, and they're keeping you informed as to anything that might pop up or crawl in.
Yes, it always happens on a Friday afternoon.
Just make sure you share it with us in the background so we know also, please.
Right.
Because I hear, I hear the same stuff and I've been, so.
Yeah, it's always good for us to know what's going on in our, in Mason County. I appreciate you taking my phone call on the Friday afternoon. What a way to start the weekend.
Thankfully, it was, it was not that. Could have gone the other way.
Yeah.
Thank goodness. Thank goodness. All right, any, anything else for the Commissioners? So I have anything for public health?
Uh, Dave, we sat and talked a while back about being able to eventually have that training. I, I would hope that we don't drop the ball on that. It's been quite a while since we talked. I also brought forward where we can pick up the, the Narcan kits much cheaper. I don't care how we get them, as long as we get them and we continue to move forward, we need to get that training out there to these people, especially since we get them out there. I saw on the news was it saying grandma and grandpa. That's what I've been saying for a while. Grandma and grandpa is the one that needs to have it. In order to protect every aspect of our community, that's a smart move. It's not a political move. It's a smart move. You never know which one can save who when, and it doesn't make people a bad person because they end up being saved. There's a lot of innocents people out there. And even those that aren't innocent still deserve to have those things available to bring them home at night.
Nope, we're on it. So we've got some discussions going on and I think as we, as we look at some of this opioid funding that's coming down to us, I think that's one of the things we need to, to take into account is, you know, for the prevention of opioids treat, it would fit into that, so.
Thank you.
I think it's a hot topic at the ledge. Well, it has been for quite a few years. So it's good to see, see movement and good to see people getting involved. So Dave, we've got a question for you too. So on the Narcan, if you keep that in your car, you know, just in case, is there a heat, you know, up to a certain temperature before it goes bad?
Yeah, you don't want to let the stuff get really hot, sit in a car at a hundred plus degrees. That's not a good idea. It'd be better to keep it in your bag, you know, that goes with you in and out, so it doesn't sit there and get hot.
That's what I thought. I was just wanting to.
The Dollar Store also has these little bags for cold and heat stuff. You could pick up sometimes and you wrap it up in that and keep it in your spare trunk area or anything else like that will also keep getting heated. But yeah, that and a shelf life both are something we have to pay attention to. We haven't.
Yep, for sure. All right, anything else for Dave or Melissa? Or anything else in public health, the public health arena? All right, well, I guess, I guess you're good to go.
Okay, well, thank you. Talk to you later.
All right, thanks. All right, Mark, it's up to you now.
All righty, we're gonna kick it off with a proclamation. Diane, are you available?
Yep, good morning. We have a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month for April. We'd like to put it on next week's agenda.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay, and then we have a contract amendment for Mason Web TV. Sometimes Diedrich, he will just live stream our Zoom meeting and he has said he will do that for a flat rate of twenty-five dollars per hour. And that's not in our current contract, so we would like to amend it to include that.
With me.
Yep.
I'm good with that. Eventually, we should have a discussion about making sure we have compensation for this particular medium at a rate where it's a little bit better. I know that we all know how much work goes into this and what kind of a bargain that we've been getting for all these years. And I just wanted to say it out there so that we can maybe have a consideration briefing or something about what to do about that. That's if we all feel the same way. I have a feeling we do.
I know Diedrich makes himself available whenever needed. So, yeah, I think it's worthy of a conversation.
Yeah, we renewed this contract for this year and when we went in, he did increase his rates a bit, but yes, he's very reasonable and I always tell him, make sure that he's costing it out so that his costs are all covered. And he reassures me he's good with the prices and he's the one that proposes them, but definitely during budget, we'll address it again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that twenty-five dollars an hour is pretty, pretty cheap because as we all know, Diedrich is there for the entire presentation too, so. Nice to, nice to have him there, but definitely want to make sure that he's compensated. All right, moving on. Mary can talk about our flexible spending account options.
How about now?
Yep.
Yep.
Every time I change it to my webcam, weird. So I had come before the Commission and briefed on February twenty-seventh about a flexible spending account for eligible Mason County employees. And I had been approved to go out and do an interest poll to see how many employees would potentially want to participate in this type of benefit. And it's also part of our strategic plan and then it's been brought up from several different areas in the county anecdotally as a, as a potential employee request. And so we went out and did the poll and we had about twenty percent of our employees that expressed that they'd be interested in this benefit, so about seventy. And that was kind of what we needed to move forward with costing this out because it is dependent upon not only employees participating, but also their elections amount. And the funny thing is Navia said you'll get about seventy people who will be interested. And they were right. And they've also told us that our average election amount per employee interested would be around sixteen hundred dollars. And at this point, they haven't been wrong yet, so I'm willing to bet that that would probably be a safe amount to base our mathematical equation on here. So it's, it's kind of squarely, but basic deduction amounts from the IRS for healthcare, so there's two different kinds of ways that employees can elect, so they can elect for healthcare. And that's three thousand fifty dollars they can have deducted and put towards their flex spending account. They can also use it for daycare and there's a max of five thousand dollars. So based on seventy employees participating and let's, we would assume for our purposes, that their election amount would be sixteen hundred dollars. That puts the total election amount of the county at a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. The benefit to the county here and to employees actually is FICA tax savings. So on the spreadsheet, you can see that our estimated FICA tax savings would be eight thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. The administrative costs for Navia Benefit Solutions to administer this program is four dollars and fifty cents per participating employee per month. So I'll put that in a year, it's three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. So our cost savings actually just from using Navia, it's the administrative cost of Navia is actually completely covered and we have four thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars in savings.
Mary, what about the wait on the auditor's office?
I did speak with them and at this point, it's a another deduction and I did speak with payroll and the auditor and it seems to be a pretty minimal impact for the benefit that would be seen by the employees and by the organization. And we also would need to create, and Mark, maybe you can talk more about this, an additional line in the general fund. So how it works is the county holds this hundred and twelve thousand dollars or whatever number it ends up being, we hold the funds. Navia does all of the administration behind approving employees' claims, approving, you know, with their little debit card swipe, if they use that at the pharmacy, submit, going through reimbursements. So the county is not on the hook for determining if something is an eligible expense or reimbursement. And then Navia invoices the county on a weekly basis based on whatever reimbursements employees are putting in for. In order to make sure that that process is smooth and timely, right, for employees, we want to make sure they see their reimbursement in a timely manner. The county would need to put down ten percent of our total election amount. So just for this scenario would be eleven thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. And that helps that rollover continue, so employees don't see a lag in reimbursement for their claims. I see that the auditor has his hand raised.
Hey, good morning, everybody. I just wanted to affirm what, what Mary said. We met with Shannon and Michelle in Mark's office with, with Mary and they were okay with the additional data entry work that they would have to undertake to, to make this available. And then I followed up with them a couple of days later and they're still okay with it. So minimal impact to the auditor's office.
Do appreciate that. Um, the other thing that we have for options as the county to administer the program is how we handle unused elections at the end of the year. So let's say an employee opts for sixteen hundred dollars to be elected. They don't use it all. There are rules about how much they can roll over and then we kind of, you know, can determine how, what kind of a grace period we want. So Navia's recommendation was that, you know, they can roll over six hundred and ten dollars. And then we could offer the employees, you know, up to a two-month grace period to spend down their unused elections. And then any unused fund can be forfeited back to the county to be used for administrative costs of the program. So we would, you know, employees would, we'd want to help encourage them to maybe deduct a little lower till they figure it out or cost it out, but we would provide maybe a grace period where they could continue to spend down that six hundred and ten dollars so they're not, you know, forfeiting a huge amount. The other thing is if we were to do this program, I've already spoken with Navia. They would be fine with a June first kind of like kickoff date and they would do a prorated for a six-month enrollment. And then it would work the same way as open enrollment does every year in the fall. You know, the employee chooses what their deduction would be for the following year, just like they would choose their medical plan and it's all done at the same time. But for this first year, they would prorate us for just the six months. If we were ever to leave Navia and go somewhere else, we would absolutely one hundred percent get our ten percent deposit back. The eleven thousand one twenty or whatever it ends up being.
So when you asked employees, if, you know, if they were interested in this, did you also ask them what art they would maybe use it for? Like was it child support? Was it healthcare?
No, I did not.
So Maria, I want to give you a special thanks because this came directly from you as an idea for our staff and for our people. As somebody that understands my medical and everything I go through, we have in certain areas a decent out-of-pocket that we have to cover that this can, can handle as well as deductibles as well as this usually covers many things that are over the counter. And we have a lot of employees that have kids where this could truly be a benefit, not having to pay that tax on those dollars. And I'm completely, not only am I completely supportive, again, I think that it is, uh, needs to be recognized that this came out of thin air. needs to be recognized that this came out of thin air through you. And I think when everybody benefits after a year, we're all gonna appreciate it even more. So I'm supportive, Commissioner.
Commissioner Shute?
Yeah, I'm supportive as well. Great job, Mary. Good presentation.
Well, you got three out of three.
Okay, thank you. May I have, I didn't put it on my, but may I have approval to move it to the action agenda for the next action?
Now you're pushing it.
Okay, what about the one after?
I, I'm supportive.
I realize I didn't put on there.
Because it's not tomorrow, it's the next one.
Okay, okay. If it was tomorrow, I would have gotten a no, probably. Okay, that's fair. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mary.
Um, so my second item, I think I'm next, Mark, is the personnel policy. And you'll be very, very excited. The whole thing is not included in the packet this time, just this one little page and a half here. And so we've been looking at, as we go through our collective bargaining process in the contracts, there's very specific language around discipline corrective action in our contracts, but it wasn't necessarily reflected in our personnel policy, and we wanted to make sure communicating to employees how even for, you know, un-repped employees, that we would still follow, you know, progressive discipline and best practice when it comes to handling performance management. And so there's a addition to, we're adding a section 8.14 with the language that spells out progressive discipline, what it looks like, and then again, that there's flexibility based on the egregiousness of whatever has occurred. But that way, we have some parity and consistency between how repped and non-repped employees would go through a process around corrective action.
Any questions, Commissioners?
Great cleanup. Glad there's only a page and a half of the personnel policy in the packet. That's progress as well.
I'm supportive.
Angela, my, great job. I love how you're, you're catching things that may or may not be addressed in, in all areas, so I appreciate that a lot.
Hoping to start having like bigger ones, but not have the whole part personnel policy either, so I don't have to keep doing 80 resolutions, but not have to print the whole thing for you either.
I appreciate that.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. So the next item I have for you is another, is another, because this is a new opioid settlement agreement that's coming out. So our Attorney General, Bob Ferguson, has sued CBS, Walgreens, Walmart, Teva, and Allergan. These are the pharmaceutical come, or these are the, the distribution side, so pharmacies where individuals were going to pick up. We were successful in, in court in determining that they should have been more careful about how they dispensed opioids. So there is another, another settlement coming our way. As with the, the last one that we did, we need to actually sign in in support of it. So what I've provided you here is a little bit of background. I don't know the exact dollar amount yet. But you can see that Mason County, which includes the city of Sheldonshire, is just under, is just under 1%, so that would be like .009329. And, and so we would get those funds that we would put into the same account that we put the first ones in. And then Dave was referring to some options for how we can spend that in the future, so I do think that there's definitely a need there, and having these additional resources would be beneficial.
Questions, Commissioners?
No questions worth signing, and just Commissioners, I, I think there are a couple of additional settlements that are also in the pipelines that we'll be doing this for, so. It's, it's good that we're getting our, our fair share of those settlements, and the people are being held accountable.
Agree.
So I will, I will continue to bring these forward, Commissioner, and, and as they come up. On this one, what I would request to do is that they have an approval process that allows us to use DocuSign, where we don't have to actually print off. I provided all of the settlement agreements in here in case you wanted to see them, or individuals from the public wanted to see them. But for ease of, of just the transaction side of thing and timeliness, I believe that I'm going to request in the formal action before the board next Tuesday to allow David Wyndham, our Director of Public Health and Human Services, to actually sign off on those, because he has the DocuSign email that came directly to him. And if the board gives him the authority to sign, then we can, we can get those turned in and, and get it recorded that Mason County wanted to participate.
That would be great.
Good with me.
Thank you. My next item is, this is something that we've talked about for a while, we've been keeping track of. Kenzie's helped me put together a list of the documents that I've signed for in the first quarter of 2023. So I'll be bringing these to you on a quarterly basis. Just to kind of help you go through the 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 spreadsheet that's attached, you'll see the individual agreements that I've signed off on. If you see an agenda item and an item number, then those were items that I brought before you in a regular meeting. You approved for me to sign, and I signed those documents. Many of the other ones we briefed on, and the board gave me approval to sign off on, so the one that I could probably bring out is our, our letter of support for the community lifelines request for CDS funding, as well as the Archipeninsula's request for CDS funding. Those are items that were briefed with the board. The board agreed that they wanted to be supportive of that, and so I signed off on behalf of the board on those letters.
Mark, the only question I have is regarding the last two. Could you please just get ahold of Tim and just make sure that signing a, an agreement is something that was within the parameters of what we can do? Because you're still committing the county without a legislative action. I'm not saying no, I'm just saying we want to double-check that, and a letter of intent can also be the same as considered obligating a county, depending on how it's worked. So if you don't mind, just bounce those off of Tim. I very much appreciate this. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I will, I will bounce this off of Tim. I believe that I believe that Tim reviewed both of those agreements. It was just last week, but I will, I will verify that. And I will verify that those are items that, that I would have the authority to sign off on based on our resolution. And make sure that, that as we move forward, we'll continue to do those, but perfect opportunity to catch those items as we go through them on a quarterly basis, so.
And that's why we do this. Good job. I, that's what I would ask for.
And that's all I had for you for support services.
All right, thank you. Do we have anything for Mark?
Yeah, and the Commission, I was at the risk pool this last week, and there was that lawsuit that the Association of Counties was looking into in regards to having the state cover the costs of indigent defense and the like, that the West Coast has, or the West Side has fallen through. And in the conversations, I think that we should probably get together with our attorneys and the public defender, I think, because that seems to be where the, where the disconnect was in the other west side of the mountains county is the public defender was not on board with, we need to make sure that they would be on board, but I think we should have conversations about joining.
I think that's a great idea. Appreciate that. Commissioner Shute, anything for Mark or the, or the Commissioner?
Nothing for me.
Okay. I have nothing either. So we can move on to Public Works? Or do we have any calendar updates? Should we hit that first? I don't think I have anything.
Nothing new to add for me either.
And I was not prepared for that question, so I'll say nothing new, but.
Well, and if, if you find anything, we still have the end of the meeting to, we can bring that up.
Oh, I have an emergency cemetery meeting that did come up, but none of you guys will be there, I'm sure. Also, we have a special pancake breakfast in Tahuya that I was asked to come up and speak with, but quite often, other Commissioners do show up for those, so I wanted to let that be known. And in case you're gonna be at the Senior Center for the Hoppening. I just had to say it.
Just because it was fun to say.
That's right. It was fun to say it, actually. So that's where I'm at.
All right. All right, well, I have nothing, so let's move on to Public Works. Loretta?
Hoppity sounds fun. I seem to remember a Hoppity costume.
All right, well, it's a bike show this morning. Busy building.
Busy building. Good morning, Commissioners. First up, we have is the County Road Project number 2049, North Shore Road. This is a little shoe fly culvert to mile post 8.18. It's an existing corrugated metal pipe that is failing, and it gets plugged up quite often and floods adjacent to property owners, and so we're looking to replace that with a a box culvert, probably about eight foot by six foot box culvert is what we're looking at. We want to create a CRP so that we can launch a bid for the structure itself.
Supportive. Thank you for doing this. As you can imagine, I hear about this one all the time.
I can imagine.
I am too. Just a quick question. The, the box culvert has got to be a lot more structurally sound than a regular culvert, aren't they?
Metal pipe, yes. Typically, you go to a box because of the height, so with the pipe, a round pipe or, or a pipe arch, you have to have a lot more vertical room to get a wide base to it, so. So in this case, we don't have that room, and so we're switching to a box culvert. So, yeah, they are more structural sound.
Great. I love construction. My dad, my dad worked construction, and I was always well, not always, but I was in the cab with him a lot on different equipment, and so just have a, a huge appreciation for everything that you guys do.
Plus, there's still logging trucks that go over that on a rig or basis every day.
Yep, and then up next, we have requests to allow us to get a hydraulics engineer involved. This is Belfair to Tahuya. Just up from K's Corner, and it's called Schoolhouse Culvert. I don't know if you've ever dropped by there, but it's quite the scene. It's a 12-foot wide, seven-foot tall multiplate aluminum pipe, but you can only see the top six to eight inches of it, because it's full of aggregate. And what it does is it plugs itself up over the years, and we've cleaned it out a couple of times, but it just fills right back in. So what it, what'll happen is when we actually do get a high flow there, it'll actually flood over the road. And as you know, Belfair to Tahuya is our backup for North Shore whenever we have power lines down or anything like that, so we're trying to make this passable, so. We did work out some some, some stuff with WDFW about trying to reset it, but they're trying to put some more restrictions on us, and so we'd like to hire a hydraulics engineer just to go over what their thoughts are for, for the process, and I, I think that we can, we can do something cheaper and easier than what, what's actually being proposed, so. That's what we're looking for.
I know you guys, you just took me out there. Appreciate the tour. But we're gonna have to have another one, by the way, soon. But it was amazing how full that pipe was, and how much the little space in between the road and the, the top of the gravel.
I call it unique.
That's what you call it.
That's what I call the Tahuya Peninsula is unique, yes.
It's a bit unique.
It is, it is. Well, I'm supportive. Commissioners?
I'm saying well.
All righty.
Thank you.
Well, kind of a short and sweet one this morning, Commissioners. The only, Commissioner Netherland, a quick follow-up about the folks that are out of internet on Razor Road. So I did reach out to the, the association, and they gave me a list of very specific locations. And Terry will be following up with CenturyLink today.
Thank you.
And I think we've mentioned it before, that we've just been experiencing lots of theft. And sadly, it's taking a while for our telecommunications and our power folks to sometimes get replacements, and it's not a good deal at all.
Not a little aggravating, is it?
Uh, yes.
Especially for what they get for it. And they get nothing but the cost of actually going in.
Oh, exactly.
Correcting it is astronomical.
Yeah.
Fentanyl, selling for $1 and $2 a pill.
All right, anything for us?
Anything for Loretta, Commissioners?
I do, Loretta, if somehow if we get together to give me those maps for the commission, let you know I, I still have my lunch with Secretary Millard. And I, we need to give a special thank you to our legislative contingent for getting it in those budgets, and a special thank you to our Commissioners for working our legislative contingent in a good way. To make sure we're taken care of. Now hopefully, we can work with Secretary Millard to make sure it doesn't get stricken out or negotiated out, and I think showing them the the impending dangers of not following through with this for all of Washington State is, should be easy to do. I'll give you an update when we're done. Hopefully, we have it from three prongs that this, this project, the freight corridor goes nowhere. Does not go away. It's still, it gets done. I said it wrong.
Good clarification, thank you.
It looks like we have a maybe one person from the public on here, a couple of people from the public. Loretta, do, could you do, could I put you on the spot to give a quick summary of the House and Senate budget proposals that are out there for transportation and how they would be impacted by?
Sure, yeah. So we're looking good in both the House and Senate in terms of our for funding for the SR3 freight corridor. And the primary difference between the two is one kind has the, the project front-loaded in the first or the next biennium. And it's looking, they both have about the same, same end date in the biennium, but more aggressive, a more aggressive schedule. So that's looking very, very positive. And other transportation items that we've been watching are the basic, the Federal Fund Exchange Pilot Program, and that is still moving forward, and we're excited about that. And that, what that would do, it would streamline some of the, the Fed funding hoops that we need to go through, and that, that would be an incredible program, so looking forward to seeing continued progress on that. Grab, the other thing that's kind of exciting for local government is Grab has two positions that are in the works, and they will help with transportation planning and grant writing for local government as well, and so that's a, that's a nice addition. Our cap funds are well-funded, Public Works Board is well-funded, well, it's, it's solid, so that's exciting. Thank you for your advocacy on that. And let's see, what other highlights? I mean, that's, that's about it. But looking good.
It's not looking too bad, is it?
I'm sorry, Commissioner?
It's not looking too bad.
Nope, not looking too bad.
All right, any, any questions or comments for Loretta?
Me.
All right.
Commissioner Trask, I have a quick update for you. I forgot to add it to my agenda, but in the House budget, there currently is some capital construction money for figuring out the placement of a new jail for Mason County. So we'll see, we'll continue to monitor that, but I just wanted to let Commissioner Trask and Commissioner Netherland know that Commissioner Shute and I are gonna actually be meeting with our Sheriff's Department to kind of talk about just how, how do we move forward with this, and what would be, what are, what would our plan be?
That's awesome. Yeah, appreciate that a lot.
So let Mark know your thoughts.
Absolutely, that's not a problem. All right, anything else for this briefing? I don't see anything else on the I don't see anything else on the agenda.
Then Chair, move adjourned.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, guys. See y'all later.